So seeing no further public comment, I will close this public hearing at 6:31. Good evening again, folks. So I'd like to call the Monday, October 3rd, 6:35 PM Public Hearing to order. This public hearing is for Council Orders 2022-118 Utility Granted Location, National Grid Broad Street, Field Street, Public Safety Complex. And then 2022-119 Utility Granted Location, National Grid Field Street, Public Safety Complex. So at this point, I'd like to ask anyone wishing to speak in favor or opposition to come to the podium, state your name and address. And if you do not wish to speak but would like to either support or oppose your opposition recorded, please sign in on the sheet on the table at the back of the chamber. So is there anybody willing to speak or in favor or against? All right. Seeing none, no further public comment. I will close this public Again, good evening, folks. Again, I'd like to call the Monday, October 3rd, 6:40 PM Public Hearing to order. This public hearing is for the Council Orders 2022-120 Utility Granted Location, Mass Electric Verizon, Columbia Street, MBTA Bus Garage. And 2022-121 Utility Granted Location, Mass Electric Columbia Street, MBTA Bus Garage. So at this point, I'd like to ask again, anyone wishing to speak in favor or opposition, please come to the podium, state your name and address. If you would wish not to speak and would like your support or opposition recorded, please sign in on the sheet on the table at the back of the chamber. So at this point, does anybody who wants to speak in favor or against? So seeing not further public comment, I'd like this public hearing, I'm going to close this public hearing at 6:41, and we'll be back in a few more minutes at 6:45 for the final public hearings for the Public Works. Thank you. Okay. Again, we're back for the 6:45. I'd like to do my notes. McCarthy, you always distract me. 6:45, I'd like to call to order the Monday, October 3rd, 6:45 Public Hearing to order. This public hearing is for Council Orders 2022-120, no, I'm sorry, 125, excuse me, Utility Granted Location, Mass Electric Verizon, 27 Franklin Street. So at this time, at this point, I would like to ask if anyone wishing to speak in favor or opposition to come to the podium, state your name and address. If you do not wish to speak but would like to either support or show opposition and have it recorded, please sign in on the sheet on the table at the back of the chamber. So, anyone like to speak in favor or opposed? Okay. Seeing none, seeing no further public comment, I will close this hearing at 6:46. And we'll be starting at 6:50. Thank you.
I'd like to call the meeting to order. The Quincy City Council meeting, Monday, October 3rd, 2022, is now 6:50 PM. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Counselor Andronico.
Present.
Counselor Kane.
Present.
Counselor Harris.
Present.
Counselor Liang.
Present.
Counselor Mahoney.
Present.
Counselor McCarthy.
Present.
Counselor Palmucci.
Counselor Phelan.
Present.
President Dubana.
Present.
Eight members, you have a quorum.
Eight members, we have a quorum. Please stand if you can. If you can get a moment of silence, please use it as you wish. Please turn to the flag.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. It's to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, please read the open meeting law.
Pursuant to the open meeting law, any person may make an audio or video recording of this public meeting, or may transmit the meeting through any medium. Attendees are therefore advised that such recordings or transmissions are being made, whether perceived or unperceived by those present and deemed acknowledged impermissible.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Before we get into our agenda items, I just want to just remind all councilors that we will be installing the 15-minute limit, 15-minute rule limit, and we'll allow all councilors to speak, and then we can come back to everyone for five minutes. Okay. First item on the agenda, Madam Clerk.
Department of Public Works Projects Update from Commissioner Al Graziosi.
Good evening, Mr. President, councilors. I'm here with City Engineer Paul Costello to report to you on this year's, where we are and the progress of our capital improvement plans for water, sewer, roadways, and sidewalks. I've given you a list of every roadway we're working on and what we're doing on that particular roadway. I will start with our water main capital plan. This year, we're working on 37 streets, 6.2 miles. Our original budget this year was $12 million for water mains. Because of the way we engineered this project, and I have to give kudos to my engineering team, Mr. Dan G. Andrear and Brian Terrio designed all our water mains in-house, and that's something in the past we've used outside engineers to do, and because of their engineering and also resident engineering, not bringing in outsiders, we probably saved somewhere around $1 million in those costs. So it's a great story. How they manage these contracts is just, they do a phenomenal job under the direction of Mr. Costello. So this year, we came in, we estimated water projects for $12 million. Because we got the bids out early, we got some great pricing from Norton, the Norton Company. Bids came under our estimate. One of the other things that happened, because of the early bids, we were able to purchase all of the piping and supplies that some other cities and towns have struggled with this year. So we haven't had any disruptions with the supply chain, and I'm very proud of that. So, in the first contract, we came in, the bid amount came in under, and our initial savings on that bid was an additional $562,000. With that money, we were able to pick up five more streets to put water mains in. And those are streets that we may have had water main breaks on during the year, and we made the decision to go in and replace those. So at the end of the day, between the two contracts, we will finish all this work this year by December 1st. We believe our savings this year are going to be somewhere around $2 million. And before you is the list again of every street we're working on and putting a water main replacement on. The next item we have is our sewer work. And sewer rehab, we're doing sewer lining throughout the city. This year, we're doing 74 streets on 9.3 miles. This is part of the SRF funding we received. This, we didn't begin this work until actually July 1st. So this work will continue through the year, and will be finished by next July. As you can see, once again, the bids came in under our estimates, so we're really in good shape there also. We believe there'll be tremendous savings on our sewer work also. The next page is our sidewalk and crack sealing repair. We, in the initial $100 million you, the council appropriated for sidewalk roadway repairs, we budgeted $2.5 million. Roughly, our goal is to spend about $500,000 a year on, these are concrete sidewalks done by outside contractors. All the asphalt sidewalks we do in-house. But this year, if you look at the list, and I've spelled out every location to you, what we've worked on this year, we are going to complete about 105 sidewalks, over 5,600 feet. We've done another 37 roadways of crack sealing, and we spent about $70,000 on that. And then we go into our roadway construction. And once again, I want to just thank our engineering team because we design all of these roadways in-house. We do the designing in the wintertime. We got the bids out early, and we're able to, if you can see Contract 1, we came in well under our estimated costs. And those costs, our estimated costs are based on last year's pricing. Contract 1 is complete. We had a savings of almost $400,000. Contract 2 and 3 came in a little bit over, and that is because, and the bid amounts, as you know, the price of petroleum has gone through the roof, and as the spring progressed. So those bids came in later. So the cost of concrete, the cost of petroleum, asphalt has gone up, and the cost of curbing has gone up. Another thing is we've been able to also, because of our contractors, purchase all of our curbing to be able to finish all of this work. And again, this is a real problem for a lot of cities and towns. Curbing right now is six to eight weeks to get curbing, it's backdoored, and even to get radius curbing, it's very difficult. So again, because of our team getting bids out early, we were able to get good pricing, and we'll be able to complete the work this year. So that's my kind of overview. Here to answer any questions. You can talk about any of the roadways, but I think it's pretty much in front of you.
Before we get started and I open it up to the councilors, I just want to let the public or the viewers at home know that there was a report that was given to us with all the numbers and schematics that Commissioner Graziosi put forward here. It's also got a great breakdown of all the work type, broken down into wards, locations, contractor, engineer, a start date, and an end date. So we have that in front of us, councilors, and I'm going to open this up to councilors for any questions or comments. Counselor Kane?
I'll be very quick. Thank you, Al. The streets look great. I mean, I love the improvements. This is something that residents are consistently asking for, so thank you for delivering and doing what you say that you're going to do. I just want to make sure that I can have this electronically so that I can send it out to residents so that they can see the progress and all the tracking of the streets and the cost.
We'll do that.
Thank you.
Yes. Thank you, Counselor Kane. Counselor Liang?
Thank you, Mr. President. Just going to start by echoing Counselor Kane's sentiments and to say thank you to you and your team. You know, there's a lot of construction across the city, but specifically, I know residents are looking for improvements on their streets and sidewalks, right? It's what they interact with every single day. And so, you know, while there's certainly increased traffic due to other construction that's going on, I think it's very helpful to be able to see actual work in front of their streets every single day as well. So great job. I just have a couple of questions to start here. On the packet that you gave us when it says work type, and it goes through, you know, there's different categories for work type, like punch lists, testing services. Could you just explain what the different work types are so that when residents are looking at this, and even myself as I'm going through, I can understand what the different work types mean?
Well, when you see punch list, that means that that's just, these roads are completed, and we just, if residents call if there's an issue or whatever, we're in the punch list phase. So we go back, say, for instance, we may have put seed down in the middle of summer, or early in the summer, and we may be getting weeds or the grass didn't come up because of the drought. We're going back now to some of those locations in the islands and reseeding those things. Those are punch list items. If someone has an issue with their driveway apron, we go back and fix that. So wherever you see punch list, that's the phase we're in. The road is complete.
And then so where it's just, for example, on the first page, one says testing, call the services. And then some other ones say services as well.
Could you repeat that?
Yeah. There's another category under work type called testing and services.
On what page is that?
Just on the first page. See the second from the bottom, West Elm Ave, Franklin Street to Mason Road Addet, and then this is testing services.
Yeah, that's, so we're in the phase, so we replaced the water main, and then we're just, we're testing, we go out after, we test the water before we put it back in service if we have a bypass up. So we're in that phase.
The other ones, I think, are pretty self-explanatory. Thank you. And then, as far as the cost goes, so I know that there were some overages, but you had, you know, significant savings as well in the other categories. And so, on the last page of the printout you gave us, for the entire total, you came in under budget, close to $4 million in total.
Yeah, I mean, if you add up the three different categories, yes.
Yep. So even though they're in different categories, like where some categories, like with the water main, with the sewer and the sidewalk, you had savings, but with the roadway construction, you had overages. Are you able to take the cost savings from the other categories and actually spend down the overages in the other categories, or do they have, those funds have to stay in each of the categories?
It's different funding sources, so no, from that standpoint. But as far as the roadway, again, that's, it's, when we say it's over, it's over the, the bid amount came in over of the estimate. But we're not running over on change orders of those things. It's just that it came in over our budgeted estimate, and that was because of the cost of petroleum.
Okay.
So we have, we, I'll say this, we've been very lucky, I won't say lucky, it's the last few years on our water main projects, we don't have change orders. We haven't gone over the contract amounts. We've been able to get extra work done because we've come under, extra streets, and so it's been great. Our team is fantastic out there.
Yeah. I mean, I remember talking to you too, because I know, I'm always coming to you with, you know, those one-off questions when you say that the request comes in from a constituent. I know exactly what you're talking about because I'm calling all the time saying like, there's this one sidewalk or this one street. And so, I know that, you know, in the past too, because you've come under, you've been able to take on additional projects that, you know, aren't typically going to be done in that year, right? And so you're getting more done in less time. And I think that's phenomenal. But I just want to make sure, the reason why I ask about being able to appropriate savings from one project, like the water sewer, and taking those to pay for the overages in the other, like roadway, is just to make sure that at the end of the day, you have enough funds for this work that you're doing. And so, that's what I just want to understand, is just logistically, you can't take the overages, I'm sorry, the savings from the other categories and use it to pay down roadways. So are we, do we still have enough in appropriations then to pay for that work?
Yes. As of now, yes. I mean, we're just, we're only in our second year of that $100 million roadway, so, you know, we have a long way to go.
Okay. And then, again, just to clarify and to reiterate, so for the savings for the other ones, that you're just able to use those savings and just keep on taking on more projects and finishing up more projects ahead of time?
We had projects, again, on the water mains, we added those five streets this year. Those were, that was work we weren't planning on doing, but we had water main breaks, and we were able to do that.
Yeah. No, I think that's great. Again, you and your team do a phenomenal job. I appreciate that you always keep us updated. You've invited us into your office plenty of times, just for an update, right? Just to let us know what's going on every year. You're always responsive to phone calls, emails, texts, whenever things come in on this, and anything related to DPW really, but specifically with this. I really appreciate it. So thank you again to your team. Great work. Keep it up. Thank you.
Counselor. Counselor Palmucci, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. First of all, Al, let me just say I'm extremely disappointed to hear that you invite other councilors to your office, as I've never received such an invitation. And I certainly didn't receive one from your predecessor as well.
[laughing]
That's all right.
Look, Counsel, you know you have an open invitation.
I know, I know, I know. So we're in year two of the $100 million roadway program. I see you had earmarked $36 million for construction year 22. What do we have left in the account? Do you remember what we spent last year?
Well, on the roadway, let me just see, we have last year...
I mean, I'm not looking for an exact number. I mean, ballpark's fine. Just trying to get a sense of, because the last time we gave you a giant bucket of money to do roads, it was like a five-year plan, and you were back here after, I think, year two or three, because you guys had jumped ahead of it so well, which is great. I'm just wondering where we're at in terms of this plan.
So this year, we, our estimate was about $18 million, a little over. And last year, I think, I believe we spent $12.1 million.
Where's, I must have been adding the water work too with the water main work.
So we're about $30 million into the $100 million.
Okay. And do you feel that that's a good place to be, that you're?
Yeah. I mean, we've been able to, you know, in the last two years, add roadways and get things done. Some things that came up. You know, if you get, if you get a water main break and you now have to put a water main in there, well, that road now gets added to your paving list. So water dictates a lot of what we do, but I feel we're in good shape.
And you had referenced that, that you were able to add a, you know, a street that had a water main break or multiple streets. Is that because of the flexibility you have with this fund, that you have the money, or, I mean, could you do that if you didn't have this established fund? Would you be able to do that out of your funding?
No.
Okay.
No, no.
And does that save us money in the long run, that we're able to do it when there's a water break, that the street's open, we're able to get in there and do the actual work that we would have normally waited for?
Absolutely, yeah, absolutely. We can, we can get that done and be able to jump on it like that at good pricing, because we don't know what the pricing will be like in a year or two or three years. We, you know.
Right. Have you ever seen, have we seen it gone down? I mean, it's only gone up, right?
Well, on the water, pricing has gone down this year. Our estimate's based on last year. Paul, what did we pay last year?
We paid about $310 per foot last year. This year, we're paying about $230.
Okay. About 10% discount.
And again, a lot of that is attributed to the fact that we got those designed early, and we got the bids out. We got the bids out probably before any other community. We really, that was, we pressed our guys to do that. And, you know, contractors are hungry, and Norton is a phenomenal company, and they, compared to some of the other bidders, they left a lot of money on the table because they want to work here.
Well, that's good. It's good that you've developed relationships with quality contractors that want to do work in the city of Quincy. I mean, I...
And you never see a change order from them, unless we give them an additional road. Which is fantastic.
That's, that's good. It's, just the thought of having that flexibility and allowing you to do things on the fly that in the long term, save taxpayer monies, as well as improve the street conditions sooner than they otherwise would have, makes me think that we should always have an open budget for things like this. You know, I don't know what an appropriate amount is, but, you know, a million or two or something that's always there so that you can tap into it for such projects.
No, it's a great point because in the past, if there's no money, if you get a water main break on a street, you fix it and you patch it, and then you pray it doesn't happen. And we, you know, we could get numerous breaks, and then, but now we're able to go in and say, okay, there's a history here, let's fix this now, or let's fix it next year.
It's a difference to me, it's, you know, I always think of stuff as a homeowner because I think it's easier for me to understand, it's probably easier for residents to understand. But it's like having a roof leak and putting a tarp over it versus reshingling the roof, right? It's like, yeah, you could probably get away with putting a tarp on it, and it's not going to leak, but in the long term, you're going to need to replace the roof anyways. You're better off doing it when it needs to be done initially than waiting and hoping that it doesn't get worse. So I've told you privately a number of times, and happy to say so publicly, I think you guys have done a fantastic job on the road repairs. I'm in my 13th year in the council, and I think for the first perhaps eight or so years, streets were not a priority for us, for the council, for the administration. We had other things that we were doing, I think we, you know, building schools, things like that, other public infrastructure. But we have certainly caught up, I think, on turning our attention to the streets and making it a priority. We really have done, you really have done a tremendous job over the last, when was the first time we did the bond? And we started like a $25 million bond?
I believe we did a bond, did one in 2017.
16?
16, 17, yeah, fiscal year 17.
Yeah.
We had, yeah. Yeah, we did a, it was a combination, I think it was $26 or $27 million, I think the bond was 17. We used a combination of bonding, CDBG money, Chapin 90 money, but, yeah, we did that quickly.
You did a terrific job. Saving taxpayer money is always important, but doing the work is important, making sure the work is done right. I mean, that's, you want to make sure that the work we're doing doesn't need to be repeated in the short term because it's so expensive, it's so important to do. And, you know, it's not the most glamorous thing to spend money on, right, roads. But for the folks who live on a road where they hit a pothole every single time they turn it into their driveway, that's a pretty big issue for them. And quite frankly, at a certain point, the condition of your road speaks to the value of your city overall. You know, whether or not people want to move here, they want to do business here. If the streets are in utter disarray, it's not going to invite the kind of economic development that we want in the city, the economic energy that we want to see in the city. So I think we've focused our attention, this body has supported those bonds put forth by the administration, and we've supported the renewed focus on paving streets and sidewalks. And you've done a tremendous, a tremendous job with the money we've given you. You've put it to great use. I couldn't, I couldn't think of it having gone any better than the way you guys have managed that. So I thank you very much on behalf of the residents of Ward 4, which we've done pretty well under these street plans. I thank you as well.
I'll add one thing I didn't mention on this list. On this list, we also have all the work National Grid's doing, and I know it can be very disruptive to residents. But if you see all the work they're doing, we meet with them regularly, they know all the streets we're doing, so they're coming in. So we're getting gas, water, sewer work done before we pave the street. And I think it's, it's important and it's critical, and it's the proper way to do it.
I thought you were going to say last thing, come by my office anytime you want, but no, I guess not.
I'll tell you what, I'll invite you and Grids there.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. President.
Counselor Mahoney, you have the floor.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Counselor Commissioner, for this really extended list of streets and everything. Will this be posted on the website, do you know?
I guess we could, we can get this up on the website.
Yeah. I think, I think, you know, being able to email it out to our constituents is great too, but being able to point this to people when they ask questions, because I do have a couple of questions as to some streets and when they might be able to be done. But maybe we can start, I appreciate also the breakout of the money and the fact that you have a, this is a five to seven-year plan with $100 million, and you're in year two. Do you, do you have future forecasts as to what streets will be going out the next, you know, three to five years?
As far as...
So you've got all these streets that you've completed, and then we have so much to do still in the city of Quincy. I mean, the roads that you're doing look great, but then of course there's streets that are in need. So how do you prioritize those streets, I guess?
Well, we still have a lot of streets to do.
Yeah.
I think this year was really aggressive, trying 57 streets. I don't know if it's ever been done. It's, and we're just going to...
You added more, so.
Yeah, we added more. We're just going to keep our foot on the gas and keep, you know, trying to get as many as we can get done.
So is your hope, once you get past seven years, to go back and start all over again, I guess?
Yes. I don't think I'll be here, but the next person will.
Why? You'll have it all figured out, you and Mr. Costello, so. So, one of the questions I had, so, you know, in neighborhoods where you're doing water and National Grid and the gas lines and all of those, what can neighborhoods anticipate for that? Because when they come into the neighborhood, I know we've talked about that before, everybody just wants it done, right? So they, of course, we want the, I mean, I have a pothole in front, I'm a Ward 4 resident, it's getting, you know, that has a pothole that I hit every day, so that's going to be fixed, and I thank my Ward Council for that.
They put that one there, that's a different one.
You might have. But, but my point of that is, it's like, when you're in the neighborhoods and you're doing all that work, it's disruptive, and everybody knows it's disruptive, but it's, you know, hopefully, and they work really hard. I've watched them work really hard in neighborhoods. What's the anticipation for the time that they're in it, and then when the final pavement, paving will be done?
Sure. If we're in a neighborhood this year doing water and gas, we let that, those trenches settle over the wintertime. So the roads that have water and gas this year, we'll be designing those for reconstruction of pavement and sidewalks next year. So those, we'll design that over the winter. will design that over the winter. Hopefully we'll get those bids out in February and we'll start that work as soon as the weather breaks in the spring.
Okay, so people in those neighborhoods that are having that kind of work done.
Over the next, next season, the next construction season, those roads will definitely get done.
So it's usually like a, it's hopefully, if you have the money and you have the, the ability, it's usually a two-year cycle.
Two-year cycle on those roads that, that need infrastructure underneath, yes.
Okay. And then, this is just a question because I know in other communities they have like, they color code things where the sewers or the water mains have been done. So you kind of have an idea of like what roads have been done, what year they've been done. Do we do anything like that in Quincy? They kind of do caps of like in the roads to be able to identify when the work was done. I know you have a list of when they're done, but it's just.
We, we keep, I mean, we have, you know, Paul has spreadsheets that, millions of them. I can't keep track of them, but every roadway in the city, you know, when it was paved, you know, what the condition of it is, we're actually going back, we, we did a pavement, pavement management plan back in 17 or 18, I believe, and now we're doing another one. We're going back again to raid all the streets again to see where we are.
Okay. Then, so a couple of other questions. So, so a couple of years ago, you did Sammaset and Victoria Road and I know those were concrete sidewalks and some neighbors in that area were in touch with me, letting me know that those concrete sidewalks are starting to fail, like they're cracking and they're having, I'm not sure, you know, what would happen there. So if we could get, you know, somebody to take a look at those and see why that would be, does that happen often when you put those?
Oh, I mean, some of it, you can get that if you get tree roots that are, that are growing. They can, you know, crack the panel. There's always cracking in concrete. When people understand that you always have shifting and cracking, you know, some, a lot of it's mostly hairline cracks. But we look and see if there's a serious crack or if a tree root is lifting up the panel, we can go in and replace that panel.
I don't think it's true. So if we could take, I'll give you the addresses. We can take a look at it just to, just to take a look at it. I'm sure there's an explanation for it or if it's something that we can, and I know it does happen. So it might be a natural situation or it might be something we can take a look at. And then, I think I've asked you this too, in your, I was trying to find it in your book, but I know a couple of calls came in from Manette Ave in front of the, the school. I know you did all the work around there, but it seemed like Manette Ave in front of the school. Is that on the schedule?
Manette Ave, I believe, will be starting, I think, October 15th, I believe. Yeah, next week.
Yeah. And then some other phone calls, and I know you get these calls too. So down in the Squatom area, there are salt marshes that are down there. Just the, you know, what's the, and I know like Wallaston Beach has concrete, so concrete sidewalks in areas that might get flooding with salt water. Is that, you know, is that a, does that have any side, like bad effects to that, just to be able to answer that question?
Salt deteriorates, but, I mean, concrete, seawalls are concrete. Dridges and abutments are concrete. They all get salt. You know, concrete sidewalks down at Wallaston Beach that get salt all the time. They, you know, if, if, you're going to get, you know, you may get flooding every once in a while, but that's not going to damage the concrete.
It shouldn't, it shouldn't.
But I mean, you know, we ask residents not to put rock salt down on concrete because that, it can, it can chip it, that type of thing, but no, I think if you get a flood here and there, it's not going to, the concrete should be fine.
Just, just for my own, wouldn't the same thing happen if you put it down on like, on the tar too? Like, wouldn't it crack, like the salts? Not as bad?
No, no, so not as bad. Asphalt can handle it better.
I personally think the concrete looks.
We proved that every winter.
The concrete looks, the concrete looks so much better, but I just, you know, I do get phone calls about that type of stuff, so I just wanted to be, be sure that I was able to follow up on that too. And then, you know, when you, I know that you said that there's certain areas that you've gone over and I know you just explained this to Council Yang, but there's areas too when you come in under. So if you, if you go over in your budget for this year because you have $100 million, is this something like will be taken away from next year or is it?
Yeah, but I think we'll be, let me look at the, if we look at the, again, over our estimate, we, you know, we're probably half a million over the engineer's estimate. Again, we have to anticipate the cost of construction items going up and the cost of petroleum. Now next year, if petroleum costs come down, then our asphalt prices come down. So it's, you know, last year the pricing was great because petroleum was cheaper. Concrete was cheaper. So we benefited last year. Came in under last year. We may be a little over this year on that.
It balances out.
It balances out, yes.
So, you know, in the anticipation of like, when it, you know, things going up like the petroleum and the materials going up, I guess if you could keep us posted as to when you're, when you're figuring out what streets you're doing, because it's important for us to have an idea of how much we're going to be able to get accomplished in that five to seven years. I know that what it was asking me for is we have a lot of roads that have to get done and the ones that are done look beautiful. And then it's the neighborhood that doesn't have it done saying, you know, when, when do I get mine done, which is a normal thing, right? So especially if you're in your neighborhood where it's like three streets are done and the fourth street's not done. And then the next time it comes out, the fourth street doesn't get done because it's usually how it's prioritized. How does that get determined?
I'll say this though, we can say we're over our estimate, but we've also added additional streets this year. So those streets weren't in our estimate. So we're really not, or we need to come into it.
Yeah, no, I.
Really not over.
Actually, I know because there was one neighborhood, I think it was up by Princess Eve, that wasn't even on your list and I think National Grid needed to get in there and I'm not sure what the story was there, but I think you added, you added a whole neighborhood up there. Is that correct?
Those, we haven't agreed with National Grid. They're going to, they're going to pay for that. They're going to pay, they're going to give us money for those roadways. So we, I told them, if you want to come in and we're not doing the road, you're going to pay for it.
Okay. So is that area all set now or?
Princess Eve, they'll be paved this year. Princess Eve and Miles Drive and next year Purina Drive and Joan Drive will be, they're having gas put in now.
Okay. And then just one last question. When you have, so did we just recently, like maybe the last six months, have a water break somewhere?
Oh, we've had, at least water breaks, yes.
So, so going off of what Council Pamucci was saying, so when you have that water break, is that something you try to go with and you try to?
Some of, we may have a water main break on a road that's in our plan for the next five years. So other, other roads, they weren't in our plan. So a couple of these were small roads. We said it made sense just to go in under our contract, under the pricing we have and let's fix it now.
Yeah. So you try, do you try to identify some of those water mains ahead of time before they break?
We, we have, we've done a, a citywide water study. So we know what streets and what are our priorities.
You know where the stresses are.
Know the stresses. We know where we have fire flow issues. We know we have pressure issues. So that's, that's why, that's how we come up with the list of the water mains to do.
Yeah. So when those do happen, which must be your worst nightmares when they do happen, because you probably have them on a list and probably know that they're potential areas that are going to happen. How many, I mean, are there a lot of those still in the city that we have to do? I mean, I'm sure there is. A lot of the water and sewer areas that we have that are, that are high pressure areas that could potentially cause problems.
Yeah, I mean, we have, we have our list, so we, we know what those are.
Are they in specific areas? I guess I'm trying to say, are they all over the city?
No, they're all over, they're all over the city.
I said they're in specific areas. Right. The last question I have is, so we're two years into a five, the five year, correct?
Yeah.
And I know you said.
Five to seven year.
Five, seven years.
We're trying to do it in five.
Because you have goals. Because you're going to be here for five, right? So for the, for, I think you said you, you had it from a couple of years ago, a list of priority, like the, you prioritize a list of streets that are going to be done and certain areas that are going to be done. Is, is that something that's also out in the public for us to be able to see too or?
A list of roadways, yeah. I believe it has been put out. I believe I, I shared it with the councils at the time. Now, some things have changed. Again, water mains dictate a lot, dictate changes. If we find some roads that have to be replaced, that means we have to pave that street. So we have to work with that. And again, that becomes a priority, so it shifts.
Yeah. So I guess the reason I was asking, I know you shared it with us. I just didn't know if that list was also generated out into the public so the public could see, like anticipate when their streets might be in the five or seven year plan, like if.
Sure, we can, we can put that out there. We also have a list of alternate streets.
Yeah.
That if money becomes available, if we, you know, work within our budget and that we have, have on our list. We're constantly adding to that alternate list.
I think it's helpful just because there's many people that will ask that question and I know that you have, you know, you have a prioritization list that you're working off of, but it's just always nice to be able to, and if you can get them done earlier or they shift because of that water main break or whatever happens, to be able to have that understanding as to why something shifted. Because I think that's, it's a fear thing for people to know or be questioning when their street's going to be able to be done or not done. Because again, I'll go back to the, you know, you live in a neighborhood and four to five streets get done and your street doesn't get done, it all of a sudden feels like, you know, I could say that to Council Pamucci. I've been waiting for my street, I'm just kidding. That pothole in front of my house. But, but the, but.
Council Pamucci's streets are in worse shape.
Yeah. No, I just, I'm just, I'm just kidding because he, he said it with some purpose, but it, but the, but it's been, it's, it is great because I think that helps with the transparency, be able to let people know what's happening. Because you have been doing an awful lot of work and I would say, you know, for a long time there was, it, it may have seemed like your budget might have been smaller and you, or you weren't, you were still getting a lot of work done, but you had the whole city, but you're starting to, you're starting to, I can start to see like more neighborhoods, more areas getting done and, and it looks, the streets look great. So of course, as soon as you put those new streets in, people drive faster, but it becomes a whole other problem. Can I, one last question. When you're designing the streets, is it your department too that designs, like if you're trying to do any kind of street calming or anything like that? Do you, do you also try to do those?
The calming is done through the TPAL.
TPAL?
We work closely with them.
Yeah. So when you're designing the streets, you're just specifically talking about like the repaving of it, not necessarily, we're not, you're, you work with a TPAL if it's about specific areas?
We're doing all the design for reconstruction, the drainage work, the actual, you know, sidewalks, curbing, all of that. So that's what we do. They, they might come in after and, you know, they want bike lanes, something like that. If it's a main road, that's when you get into the calming.
Yeah.
We haven't, we have a, we have a main road list also that we haven't really attacked yet. We've, we've done some, but in the next few years, we're going to be attacking that. We have several main roads throughout the city. We're doing Willard Street this year. We did Crown Colony this year. We, we have part of Hancock Street for next year and some other mains, but we have a number of mains throughout the city that we that we have separate from our neighborhoods. So those are the roads that will be getting some calming. And then we work with the park department and the trees.
Yeah. I was just asking because I know that there's multiple departments that are, that kind of get intertwined. I noticed in your list too, when you have, you know, Collins, it can be coming in from the, you know, Dave Murphy's department or different departments, you know, checking on things, whether it's a tree, tree that's being removed or something else that's happening that might be affecting the sidewalks or, or you've identified the tree as a problem for the sidewalks or?
Yeah, we work with them. We have to, you know, we, we check with them. Every tree that comes down, we have to get permission from them to have that come down. And then we ask them where they need tree pits for new trees. So it's a, it's a collaborative. We all have to work together.
Okay. Well, I want to thank you very much because I know, I just, wherever I drove this summer, it seemed like you were, it seemed like your department was in, was everywhere doing, there, there was a lot of work being done. And it is, like, again, I'll say, it can be very disruptive to neighbors, even though they want the streets done, it can be disruptive and there's no other way to do it than to be disruptive because you, you have to be able to get the work done. But once the streets are done and once everything's paved, it just, and the sidewalks are done, I mean, it's just such an improvement to neighborhoods. So thank you very much for the presentation and I appreciate, I, I have called you, I haven't come into your office, but I have called you and gone through the list for me before. And if you could get this stuff posted on the, the website, I think that would be beneficial for people to be able to see. And then also I'd be able to see, like specifically like Manette Ave in front of the school, they'd see it was coming and, and, and I think that would give some relief to some people that are wondering when it's going to happen.
Yeah, I believe we sent the notices out to Manette. Did we, just sent them out to the residents?
Yeah. I might just be crossing wires as to that request as to what about this? Because it was after I asked for the updates, somebody got in touch with me and said, what about this street? I got a lot of what about these streets, but I see them on the list. So thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Counsel Falen, you're on the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. Al, just, just a couple of comments on the streets. I've got great reports back from all the neighbors everywhere you've been. I mean, the only thing is, there's probably a few more streets that were like you on. But but a question I had is, if, if we have streets that have come up, should we go through you, through Paul? They're different streets. I mean, one of the things that does happen is after you do work in a neighborhood, you know, everyone wants to say, oh, they did such a great job and everyone's talking about what a great job they did. So obviously everybody wants it. So right now, are those going on the alternative, on the alternative list? So should we get them to you or?
Yeah, you can get them to me. Some of them we have because again, we're looking at worse streets. We're looking at pavement condition indexes. But we're also looking at, again, the water, the water situation because we have water mains that, you know, over 100 years old. So fortunately, that dictates a lot. We, we run into these problems. We, that's a street we, we know we have to add. So we're constantly juggling around a little bit, but yeah, absolutely, Counselor. And we'll do our best to make it, you know.
Yeah, and, and the people you have, the letters you're sending out with the project manager and everything like that on it and who to contact is very helpful as a ward councilor because you don't get half as many calls. And I've been around the city a while and I, it's usually the calls and then me scrambling around trying to find out who the person is to get a hold of and all that, where the letters you've been emailing us before they do the streets actually show, you know, who to call and stuff like that. So it's only if there's a real serious, something that was unforeseen problem, that's the only time we're going to call.
We just, I was just updated last week that we received, we've answered over 1,200 calls and emails. You know, specific to the road work. So.
Yeah, I mean, time and time again, I had people say to me, oh, I was going to call you, but I talked to who, whether it was Kinto or somebody who was at the, at the scene, I talked to him and they took care of it. So kudos to your team and I love the way you, you lay it out and it, it's very helpful to see this all laid out and that. You know, I'll continue to work with you, but I think the contracts and the results are speaking for themselves around the city. So good job to your team, good job to, to this. But I, I do, if you're going to come out with a new list or anything on streets coming up, if we could get copies of those when they come out. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor.
Counsel McCarthy.
Mr. President, good evening.
Good evening, Counselor.
So how are you?
Well, thank you.
Good. I, I know we've, we actually talked today and I know that you guys have done a tremendous amount of work in Ward 1. You know, thank you for Manette Ave and Island Ave, which are up for paving in the next few weeks. But also Potomac Esme and a few other currently, currently that are going on on top of everything else. I just had one question, Al. And I know you coordinate really well with National Grid. But Doyle Terrace.
Doyle Terrace, okay.
So that's sitting on here. It looks like National Grid did gas work and I received a couple of calls because they were wondering if they were going to get paved. And this is one I forgot to ask you today, if they were going to get paved this year. They're all done. They're sitting there and it's been done for a while, but I didn't know if National Grid calls or shots or how that works on that.
No, no, no. We, generally we will go back and pave next year.
Yeah, I'm looking at like seven, page 17 there, I think.
Are you looking at the gas list?
Yeah.
Okay, so you'd have to look at the paving list. If it's not on this list, it, it won't be done this year.
It's the only one I got on the, on the grid list where.
I don't think it's this year. I think it's next year, Counselor.
Okay. It's the only one that I have listed on the National Grid on page 17 for Ward 1. And some of the folks down there thought they were getting it this year. So I just wanted to be clear. I know we didn't talk about it, so. But that's all I have. Great job. Paul, great job. I got to find out with your offices sometime to come and visit.
Please don't.
But, you know. But all good. Thanks, Al.
Thanks, Counselor.
Counsel Liang?
I take back what I said about going to your office. I'm sorry. I'm getting so much grief for it. I wanted to, you, you pretty much already answered my two follow-up questions since I had spoken earlier, but I wanted to just follow up for clarity. So with National Grid, I know, I mean, that's kind of how I feel about them, right? But whenever they do work, I feel like sometimes they come into the city and just sort of blow up everything that you've already done, which is so amazing. So I also know you're on top of it because again, we've had conversations about what you've done to push back and make sure that they're accountable to any of the work that they do essentially mess up when they come into the city, right? And holding them to certain standards. And so I guess my question to you is, you know, do you have any sort of policy or tools in your toolbox or things that we can be helpful with to give you more resources to make sure that essentially we can hold National Grid accountable to your standards? make sure that essentially we can hold National Grid accountable to your standards if and when they ever have to do work in the city?
Well, you know, we're pretty tough with National Grid. Again, we meet every two weeks. We go over all our lists, our streets. We, they have a list of all the road, they have the list for the entire plan moving forward. No. We've given them all our water main streets for this year, knowing that those streets are going to be paved next year. They know they have to get in and get the work done. We have a resident engineer, one of our engineers assigned to them. He just watches them, spends all day checking their work, checking their trenches. So, as far as the gas work, we're pretty happy with them. When they mess up, I've threatened to pull their permits, stop all their work, that gets their attention. So, I can say we've had a pretty good relationship. And also, they want to do additional streets. They've agreed to come in and give us money for that. So, and I told them, you're not going to do the street unless you give us money.
Yeah, good.
They've been very cooperative.
No, that's great. Again, I know you have a, a pretty good process already in place to be effective in holding them accountable. I just don't ever want you to feel like, you know, with all the work that you guys are doing and as productive as all of you are, the last thing I would want you to do is have to chase your tails with them. And so, again, just keep doing what you're doing, obviously, but if there's anything we can ever do up here in, in our position up here with the resources we have to give you more tools in your toolbox as well, again, with them, it's going to be, I think, a never-ending, you know, relationship you have to sort of keep with them. And so, if we could ever be helpful up here, please let me know how, how we can do that. The second thing is too, and a couple of counselors have mentioned it, is making sure this list is accessible online. We have talked about that quite a bit over the years and making sure that there's some sort of list online. But I'm wondering if there's a way to, instead of just posting this document online, if there is, and maybe this might be a question with IT that we can collaborate with them on something, is making it so that it's like a searchable tool online essentially so that you all aren't, you know, scanning PDFs? You know, again, you have a lot of work to do. I don't want you to have to worry about scanning PDFs. But is there a way that maybe IT can coordinate updating a platform somewhere like on the DPW page, right? So, that way, whenever you have new streets going on or if there's additional streets because of the fact that you're ahead of schedule, right? Like that there's an easier way to transition that information so that folks will always be able to go back to the same page all the time, type in a street, you know, and look, look for updates as opposed to looking at updated PDFs? Do you know what I mean? I'm just looking for a way, again, to create better access without creating more work for all of you.
That's a great idea. We can talk to the IT department about that.
Okay. Just an idea. Again, I don't want, you're all doing amazing work and I don't want to add more to you, but I want to make sure that the work you are doing is accessible by residents echoing the sentiments of my colleagues. So, I'll follow up and see if I could be helpful with that as well, but I appreciate you being open-minded to it.
I just want to update one thing when talking about National Grid. The 115 line that we're placing that's going throughout the city, it's going from North Quincy to down to Field Street. They, the contract is phenomenal. They're ahead of schedule. They're working great. So, knock on wood, it's, it's been a lot easier than, I know it's disruptive, but it's been way better than we could have ever expected.
No, I think you do a great job setting the right precedent for them to make sure that they're doing, you know, following the lead of you in, in the city. So, I appreciate it. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you.
Commissioner, you know, we talk offline a lot about what's going on across the city. Obviously, a lot of the ward councils want to see what's worked, being worked in their particular wards. Some of them seem like to be the overlap. You have a good algorithm of the, of the water, the gas, the sewer, the underneath infrastructure to obviously get to the, to the settling and then getting to the roads. I know we talked a little bit offline, a little bit more technical terms. Where are we looking at for grades? And I think you talked about where you don't want to get to a point where you can maybe micro seal, seal, or it's like a seal coating. Can you talk a little bit about the technical term of, okay, if this is at grade 30, we can kind of come in and do it now before it gets to a grade 10?
Sure.
And can you talk a little bit technical terms?
Well, we look at our roads, we pave a road, and then within five years, we want to, if we start to see a crack, we want to start crack sealing. We want to keep that. 100 is the best. Zero is the worst. So, anything from, you know, 60 and above, we want to keep that. So, we, we'll do crack sealing. We'll do that type of maintenance. Some roads, we can do a micro. We can go in maybe after eight or 10 years, do a micro sail on the road to preserve it. That's another tool we have. There's, there's new type of technology coming out. There's, there's, what's it, Jordan, what do they call it? Jordan Place Asphalt. There's, there's fog sailing, there's chip sailing. So, we're, we're just kind of researching all of that right now to see how we can maintain our roads after so they, preserve them. So, they last, you know, 30, 40 years.
Do we have any grades out there that are 10s or 20s?
Yeah, we do.
We do?
Absolutely.
Sure. I mean, we talk offline all the time about how to attack.
Yep.
An algorithm to make the best bang for your buck. Let's not get to the grade 10s and 20s.
Right.
Let's, let's attack these at the micro sealing that we can do at the 50.
Correct.
With a 60 grade.
Right.
Or the 65 grade. So, it's very important to be on top of these streets and have this documented. As, as I've come on the council since 2016 in my seventh year, we've done a fantastic job with, with the administration coming in and doing a capital improvement plan and saying, okay, we got to take care of these roads, sidewalks, infrastructure underneath, and let's tackle it. Since you've come into being the commissioner, you've done a fantastic job. You've been great with myself, other counselors, and just an open invitation to say, if I give you a call, you're, I'll take care, I'm going to go take a look at it right now, Counselor, or I'm going to go tomorrow morning and take care of it. You actually go out and take, and take a look at it with your own eyes and then you can assess the situation. And this is everything. We've, we've talked many a times offline. My Counsel McCarthy probably bothers you every day.
Every day? How many times a day?
How many times a day? But you've been fantastic and, and just getting back to me. And it's sometimes, unfortunately, I could call you at 9:30, 10 o'clock at night, and sometimes you'll get back to me and sometimes it's right in the morning. So, I really appreciate that. You know, it's just something that, it's, it's better to have the communication and know that we're all on the same team to try to get things done out in the city.
We appreciate all the support from the councils.
It's been fantastic. It's been, as you can say, as Counsel Palmucci would say, it's a little different in the past. You've come into, come into the position and you've done a fantastic job, which is communicating. And what's really been huge, and if you can get this online like Counselor Kane has said, this is, this, this is fantastic. This is all broken down, it's in colors, it's in, you know, highlighted, and you can really look at each street and where it is on the, on basically, I call it, the algorithm of what's going to be done and how we proceed to do. Let it settle, obviously, over the winter and then we go back at it in the spring, right?
Correct.
When can we get those bids in?
Try to get them out by February.
Absolutely. Absolutely. So, we can get some good pricing and do the best we can. But, but thank you, any of the counselors. We're going to leave this open, Commissioner, and if we go back to this in the future. But I thank you for your presentation and coming in tonight and disclosing this for the public to know what we're doing in the city.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, counselors. Thank you, counselors.
Madam Clerk, next item on the agenda.
Number two, 2022-126, an appropriation for $23 million for Public Safety Headquarters Construction and Area Transportation Improvements.
Counselor Phelan.
Through you, Mr. President. I'd like to motion to, to move this into Finance Committee.
Motion made by Counsel Phelan to move this into Finance. We have a second by Counsel Palmucci. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? The ayes have it. It's going to go into Finance. Motion carries, going into Finance. Next item on the agenda, Madam Clerk.
Number three, 2022-127, a resolve establishing a residency requirement for all new city employees.
Counsel Andronico.
Thank you, President DeBona. You know, in recent months and just some discussions I've had with a couple constituents, a few of my colleagues, I felt the need to put this forward in partnership with Counselor Kane and discussions that we have had. And a few of the reasons why, just in the last few years, we've talked about the need for a workforce that better reflects the makeup of our city population. And I think there's no better way to do that than require that for new employees, the city dip into that pool of people to make it better reflective of those that we represent as public employees. The second part, I know just last week when we passed the employee compensation review or asking the administration to do that, I believe it was Counsel Palmucci who had mentioned, you know, some new employees can't even afford to live here within the city. And I think as an overall goal, we want new entry-level employees to be able to afford to live here. I think likewise as a goal, it should be that they actually do live here as well. Couple other added benefits for residency requirements for new employees is it is important to have a workforce that is knowledgeable about the city with which they work. I think there are tremendous added benefits to that. So, I think with that, I'd like to make a motion to approve and place into oversight. But with that, just a couple of other things I wanted to mention as to why this is, is more open-ended. And that's because residency requirements, depending on where they are, can be very complex. Looking at a few different examples throughout the country, you know, a few have said, well, you'll have up to a year to establish residency within the community. A couple have exit requirements where, say, it's maybe only three or five years that you need to live here, and then after that point, you can move on. But I think throughout this process, it needs to be more of a conversation with the employees we do have with a various number of unions and that, you know, it's not so much of a top-down approach, but more of a collaborative process. So, I'm going to ask that the administration include this in exploring possibilities for establishing a residency requirement for new employees along with their compensation review, which I will hope they will pursue in the coming months.
Okay. Motion made by Counsel Andronico to approve and also put into the Oversight Committee. Seconded on by Counselor Kane. Any discussion on the motion? Counsel Palmucci?
Yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry. Counselor Kane.
Thank you. Yeah, no, I appreciate Counsel Andronico including me in this. I think it's a very interesting concept to look into for a number of reasons, more over than what he stated specifically. I think there's an interesting opportunity here to keep more of the city's money within the economic system, right? So, have people live here, pay taxes to where they live, keep the money flowing through the city itself. I think above that, there's an interesting discussion to be had about public service. At the end of the day, everyone that works for the city is a public servant. And so, living where you work or working where you live, I think, is very important. And then thirdly, talking with my colleague here, we talked about backing into making housing more affordable. So, if we can look at how to make these jobs more applicable to support people to live in the city, to work here, I think that's a win for everyone. So, thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Kane. Counsel Palmucci, you have the floor.
Thank you. I commend my, my colleagues for bringing this forward for, for discussion. Only because we're voting on it tonight will I, will I make some comments or add my thoughts. But do we, do we know, Counsel Kane, do we know what the current percentage of city employees live in the city?
I don't have that data. Great question.
I would love to know. I would love to know. I'm not putting it on you guys, I didn't know, perhaps you knew. But I would love to know that information. I can think of some really good employees who live outside the city that I would hate to see leave. I can think of some not so great employees that live out of the city that might be nice to see them leave. But I, I'm going to vote against this only, I mean, I think it's worth having a discussion. I'm glad it's going into committee and it'll be further, further discussed. However, I just think at this time, when we're having difficulty filling positions as it is, that adding additional restrictions on the positions is heading in the wrong direction. There's a talent drain right now in municipalities, not just in Quincy, but everywhere. We look at Boston, they're in the process of eliminating their residency restrictions because they're having trouble filling positions like EMT positions, for instance, positions in City Hall and their DPW. As far as, and I certainly support the, the notion in here that the city's workforce should be more reflective of the city's population. I can certainly support that. I don't know that this is the best way to, to achieve that. As far as the economic impact, I don't know if you guys have ever been over at Mignosis at lunchtime, but the entire DPW is in there getting sandwiches. I don't know how many of them live in Quincy or don't, but I think they're providing quite, quite a good amount of economic activity in the city. But, so, just for those reasons, I'm going to vote against this, but I look forward to a future discussion.
Any counselors want to speak freely? Counsel Andronico, go right ahead.
Thank you. Counsel Palmucci brings up two incredible points. One, we don't want a brain drain for existing employees. And two is that it can be difficult to find some, we'll say, deep expertise in some areas. Now, we brought up the tree warden. For those particular reasons, that's why we specifically requested only new employees and to establish exceptions, just like many other residency requirements have, just like the city of Boston has, where if you're in trouble finding qualified employees for a particular position, the requirement can be waived. So, those two things were kept in mind. So, I don't know if you have a third reason, but those two issues were addressed in this.
Oh, yeah. Was that two? More? You want, but that's all I had. That's all I had.
Speak freely, Counsel.
No, I'm good. No, I appreciate your address on this.
Good. Counsel Mahoney.
Thank you. So, I can see this kind of going on the heels of, of checking for the salaries in the city of Quincy. And I can agree with Counsel Liang that the concern is housing. So, if we're going to make it a requirement for people to be from the city of Quincy, my concern is that it's also not affordable for some of these entry-level jobs to be able to afford to live in Quincy. For some of them, maybe if they're living at home, but to be able to be independent and, and be able to, to afford to live in Quincy can be very difficult. So, I would be concerned about that. I realize that we're just, when we're voting on this tonight, we're just voting to put it into committee, though we're not voting to put it. So, I just want to establish that as well.
Well, I think we're voting on it, aren't we?
Resolution. We're going to put it into committee.
We're gonna put it into committee, we're gonna put it into oversight. So we can have, and we can have a more of a discussion, more on it.
Point, point of order.
Go right ahead.
So I thought the vote was, if you supported the resolution and put it into, I wouldn't have spoke against it if it was just going into committee. I apologize, I thought we were voting on it.
I did specifically ask to approve. However, I am open to adjusting. I'll defer to a couple of my colleagues on the other side.
Go right, go right ahead, speak freely, Counsel Liang.
I'm so sorry, I shouldn't have raised my hand before. Counsel Mahoney had the floor. I'm so sorry, that was so rude of me. Well, I just wanted to say that I want to first of all just thank my colleagues for bringing this topic up. Secondly, I want to say that, you know, as far as, when I was talking to Counsel Kane about, you know, the affordability of living here in this city, right? I, I think that's part of, you know, that being a concern is why we should be having this conversation, right? If folks who are working for the city they're serving cannot afford to live in the city that they are serving, that in and of itself, I think, is a huge problem, right? And if this continues that conversation and continues to make it a priority, I'm all for it. If and when we can ever bring that conversation up as a body here in the city as a priority, I will jump at that opportunity. And secondly, I will just say that I appreciate Counsel Andronico, you willing to pull it back and say we won't vote on a resolve. But for those of you who know me, I'm all for voting to have a formal conversation up here. That is our job, right? And this is a vote to have a formal, you know, sort of look into, can we do this, right? It's not a vote to say, let's pass it. It might be, you know, that at the end of the day, when all the information comes back, we're gonna say, this is a horrific idea, we shouldn't do it, right? But, you know, my understanding of this, and Counsel Andronico, Counsel Kane, you can correct me if I'm wrong, as the sponsors of this, but, you know, my understanding of this resolve is that we are requesting to have this be formally explored and then have a formal discussion about it, you know, in committee. And my point in supporting all of that as well is that this should be a very public conversation, right? As it impacts, frankly, everybody here in the city, right? It opens up opportunities for folks who live here to potentially work here, and it opens up opportunities for those who work here to understand how this is gonna impact them. And so at the end of the day, for those reasons, I think, you know, I would certainly support moving this forward to, again, have a formal conversation around this, have a formal presentation, have, you know, public engagement on this process. And I think that's what this vote does. So I will now hop off my soapbox. I appreciate you entertaining that, Mr. President, and I will certainly support it for those reasons I just stated.
Thank you, Counsel. Counsel Harris, you have, okay. Counsel Mahoney, go right ahead.
So, just kidding. I just, I just, I figured we could continue going with that question. So I'm not sure still if it's a formal vote or not, but I was just curious. But it's really just a request of the, of the administration. But the reason why I was asking that was, I think, you know, along with this conversation, finding out what the percentage of the people who do currently, I, I realize this isn't going for all new employees, but it would be helpful for us when we're making these discussions to know the data that goes along with the people who work currently in our city, how many of them live in the city of Quincy and how many of them don't, and, and maybe what some of those reasons are as to why they don't live in the city of Quincy. And then I think this is really a, it, it goes along hand in hand with this, like I said, the salary piece that we were discussing when Counsel Palmucci brought it in. And there's the third prong of it, which is the affordability of our city. So those are all things that we should be discussing, and I, I agree that we can have that full conversation. But those three things have to work together to be able to make this requirement work. I also believe, I could be wrong, but I believe that the police and fire do have a residency requirement with the civil service that we could also explore a little bit further and potentially even put more teeth into that by saying that you have to live here in Quincy more than two years to be able to be on the police and fire, and then we might be able to get some more demographics and more Quincy people doing those jobs as well. And finally, just this one last tidbit that I've, I've learned in regards to the Quincy Public Schools, I think they're having problems not only with bus drivers, but also paraprofessionals. I think they just increased the salaries for the paraprofessionals for the Quincy Public Schools, and we're losing our paraprofessionals that live here in the city of Quincy to Milton and other communities because they're willing to pay them more in other communities. So it is a drain that's happening here, and you're gonna see more and more of that happen as we have salary issues that are happening within our, within different unions that are happening in the, in the city. So it is something that we should, we should be all, you know, looking at closely, whether we're, you know, we're, we're in the council, the school committee has that problem as well. But we should be looking at it uniformly across the board as far as how we can retain good talent here in the city of Quincy. And so with that, I'd say, I'd be open to the discussion, but, you know, that's, that's just where I'm standing. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel. Counsel Harris, you have the floor.
Thank you. I want to thank Counsel Andronico and Counsel Kane for bringing this up. One-word conversation that was mentioned, I, I think that it's, it's what is what we're here for. To, for me, to vote no for a conversation would be, I wouldn't be consistent in how I've voted through, through the years about just having a conversation about something like this. This is one of those, I, I grew up with, I didn't grow up, I was, I was just married a few years, and about six or seven years in Boston, I lived in Boston. And this, this issue right now that we're going to be talking about, if it's passed, which I'm sure it will for the conversation, was a very hot topic in the election of Mayor Menino the first time. And I know that because I was part of, a little small part of politics back then, and, and saw what took place with some, my concern, of course, is I saw the hysteria that took place during those conversations and during those debates about this one subject. That's why I tread, treaded very slowly with this, and I, I, I felt very strongly that I don't want anybody, I would not want anybody even think at home that works for the city or is planning on working for the city or is on the list at this time to waste any time losing sleep over it. Because there are things in place, and Counsel Mahoney has brought up, especially in Boston, they have found it very difficult, and there's exemptions. I believe the Boston Teachers Union was very much, very much involved in that conversation where they were exempt from that situation. City employees that worked for Boston City Hospital at the time, I happen to know one of those people pretty closely, they were exempt from situations like that because of, of the need, the need for, for qualified people, employees. So I think there is room for the residency law to take place, but it is one of those things that we should have that conversation, should tread lightly, and first and foremost, educate our constituents of what, of what we're talking about, not just having a vague, a vague, you know, here, here we go, this is what we're throwing out there. And I think it'll be very, I, I think, I'm gonna vote yes for this conversation to take place. I looked into this prior, and I'm, I'm very pleased that this is moving forward in, in some respects. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Harris. Any discussion here on this motion? So we do have a motion made by Counsel Andronico and a seconded by Counsel Kane to approve and then put into oversight. You gonna continue with that? Okay. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Counsel Andronico.
Yes.
Counsel Kane.
Yes.
Counsel Harris.
Yes.
Counsel Liang.
Yes.
Counsel Mahoney.
Yes.
Counsel McCarthy.
Yes.
Counsel Palmucci.
Yes.
Counsel Falen.
Yes.
President DeBona.
Yes.
Eight members.
Eight members in the affirmative. Motion carries, is gonna be put into oversight as well. Next item on the agenda, Madam Clerk.
Number four, 2022-128, a gift for $1,950.
Motion made by Counsel Palmucci.
Sorry, you slowed the draw. Move approval, send a letter of thank you.
Thank you. Motion made by Counsel Falen, Counsel Palmucci, seconded by Counsel Falen, in discussion. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Counsel Andronico.
Yes.
Counsel Kane.
Yes.
Counsel Harris.
Yes.
Counsel Liang.
Yes.
Counsel Mahoney.
Yes.
Counsel McCarthy.
Yes.
Counsel Palmucci.
Yes.
Counsel Falen.
Yes.
President DeBona.
Yes.
Nine members.
Nine members in the affirmative unanimously. Motion carries. Our next item on the agenda.
Number five, 2022-129, a gift for $10,000 from Copeland Family Foundation, Inc., for dear.
Thank you. Counsel Falen.
Motion to approve.
Motion made by Counsel Falen. I have a second by Counsel Andronico. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Counsel Andronico.
Yes.
Counsel Kane.
Yes.
Counsel Harris.
Yes.
Counsel Liang.
Yes.
Counsel Mahoney.
Yes.
Counsel McCarthy.
Yes.
Counsel Palmucci.
Yes.
Counsel Falen.
Yes.
President DeBona.
Yes.
Nine members.
Nine members in the affirmative unanimously. Motion carries. That completes our agenda items. So we go into approval of previous meeting minutes of September 19, 2022. Motion made by Counsel McCarthy to approve. Seconded by Counsel Andronico. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? The ayes have it. The minutes are approved. Thank you. Communication reports from the mayor, other city officers, and city boards. Madam Clerk, you have a utility, I believe?
Yes. To refer to Public Works Committee for Schedule and Advertising, grant of location National Grid Gas for 44 Prospect Hill Street.
So 44 Prospect Hill for advertising, okay. Motion to approve made by Counsel Harris. You have a second. Seconded by Counsel McCarthy. In discussion. Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? The ayes have it. Goes in the utility, motion carries. Unfinished, you have any more?
No.
Madam Clerk?
No.
Unfinished business in proceeding minute, meeting. Seeing none. Reports of committees. I think we have from, okay, we'll go count. Okay. Counsel Harris defers to Counsel McCarthy.
Yield it, yield.
Yield.
Thank you, Mr. President. Ordinance committee items, these are all traffic requests that I'll scroll down through each ward and ask for approval. Ward two, 2022-103, out of Handicap Parking at 190 Elm Street. I'm looking for positive recommendation.
Positive recommendation by Counsel McCarthy.
Right.
Seconded by Counsel Andronico. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose?
Also, 2022-104 in Ward two, at Handicap Parking at 100 Arnold Street. Make a motion, positive recommendation.
Positive recommendation made by Counsel McCarthy. Seconded by Counsel Andronico. Any discussion on the motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? The ayes have it.
Thank you. Award three, 2022-105, at Handicap Parking at 183 Safford Street. Motion to approve.
Motion made by Counsel McCarthy. You have a second. Seconded by Counsel Harris. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Ayes have it.
Also in Ward three, 2022-106, add no parking, both sides, Parker Street from Granite Street to 470-foot west of Granite Street. Motion to approve.
Motion made by Counsel McCarthy. Seconded by Counsel Harris. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose?
Thank you.
The ayes have it.
Award four, 2022-107, at Handicap Parking at 46 Smith Street. Motion to approve.
Motion made by Counsel McCarthy. Seconded by Counsel Harris. Any discussion on the motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? The ayes have it.
Also, 2022-108, at Handicap Parking at 44 Smith Street. Motion to approve.
Motion made by Counsel McCarthy. Do you have a second? Seconded by Counsel Harris. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? The ayes have it.
Also, Ward four, 2022-109, at Handicap Parking at 14 Center Street. Motion to approve.
Motion made by Counsel McCarthy to approve. Seconded by Counsel Harris. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all in favor? Oppose? The ayes have it.
And 2022-110, at Handicap Parking at 9 West Street. Motion to approve.
Motion approved. Motion made by Counsel McCarthy. Seconded by Counsel Harris. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? The ayes have it.
Award five, 2022-111, add two-hour parking on the north side of Green Street.
Motion made by Counsel McCarthy. Seconded by Counsel Falen. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? The ayes have it.
Also, 2022-112, add two-hour parking on the south side of Green Street. Motion to approve.
Motion to approve made by Counsel McCarthy. Seconded by Counsel Falen. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? The ayes have it.
2022-113, at Handicap Parking at 110 Green Street.
Motion made by Counsel McCarthy. Seconded by Counsel Falen. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? The ayes have it.
Ward five, 2022-114, at Handicap Parking at 117 Phillips Street.
Motion made by Counsel McCarthy. Seconded by Counsel Falen. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? The ayes have it.
And Ward six, 2022-115, at Handicap Parking at 60 Freeman Street. Motion to approve.
Motion made by Counsel McCarthy. Seconded by Counsel Harris. Any discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Oppose?